Those of you who are willing and able, please join and stand beside the question.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, you have in front of you our agenda for the next meeting. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at it and adjust it. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions?
I approve the agenda, Adrian.
Second, support. With support, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? Opposed? Most in favor? We typically have, if you see some new faces out there, we have public comment time earlier in our meetings. Excuse me, we need to open the public talk room. Get to talking minutes. Hang out, you know, coffee, something like that. Our last meeting was May 22nd. Ended for a supply. Now our commissioners had a chance to look at them and review them. Are there any comments, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none, I have motion to approve the May 22nd meeting of the planning commission.
Move to approve the May 22nd minute as written.
Paul?
Second.
That was second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? Opposed? Most in favor? Thank you now for public comment. We have a time before we get into some of our other topics of the evening. If you have something you'd like to say, please step to the microphone, give your name and address, and also please sign a sheet so that when we do the minutes, we have the correct person identified. If you have any comments, please keep them to three minutes. Anybody who wants to speak at this time to our public comment session.
Hello, everyone, my name is Inshall. You guys are going to be, oh, where do you live? I live right over there. You guys are going to be going over the proposal on the damn ordinance, and I would like to make again a point that I sent by email to all of your considerations. If the township ordinances are more strict than a state law that supersedes the ordinance, then you're going to run into a serious problem with people attempting, whether successful or unsuccessful, attempting to be commercial to avoid the ordinance. And either you have people who don't realize that they have a state law that you're effective if they're commercial, which then you have an ordinance that's working because of people's ignorance of their rights, which is problematic. Or if they do realize, they'll get more animals, to sell some animals, so that they can be commercial. And the current ordinance doesn't give a way for the township to declare whether someone's commercial, doesn't talk about what that would look like, or what that definition would be. I know when the township says, "Oh, I would like your tax documents to see whether they're commercial," I don't know about you guys, I don't think any of you would want to give your tax documents to a foible public body unless you really have to or force to for some reason, right? So I think that then you have to go and rely on the courts to decide. And if every single issue about this type of, about animals, enters going to the courts, that just costs the township a lot of money. It doesn't cost the individual much money, because actually, anyone at all, because the Farm to Consumer Defense Fund, you support almost every right-to-farm case in Michigan. So it's going to be something that to approve in courts, again and again, whether it's successful or unsuccessful, is going to be a constant expense on the township.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine, I live on Farrell Road, and I've only been to that special meeting that called when a lot of people showed up. And as somebody who lives in this township, I've lived here most of my life, and I've always told people, "I love where I live," because it's this perfect blend of agricultural, but we're not Alvin Booties, and we can't get anywhere within 15 minutes like we can within our. And I think that this ordinance, you know, as Inshall was saying, it's unnecessarily strict, and it's going to cause a lot of issues, and also incentivize people to either not do small farming, which I love about this area, or else they're going to try and get all these simple tools and commercialize. And I don't think we want to push more people into commercializing. So I'm also asking not to pass this current ordinance draft. As a citizen who lives here, I don't own any animals, I don't know what the future holds for me, but I see a lot of people who do, and I really love living here as it is, and I don't want that to change, and I don't want more issues to be caused by this ordinance.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tariq Udrow, I live on Inverc Lane, on Joy Road, and I'm asking you to vote no on this proposal. I am specifically against section 1325 regarding the heat and animals. And I just want to say, I analyze in court on both the state and federal level congressional bills for the job, and quite frankly, this section of the proposal is needlessly convoluted. First and foremost, and just most importantly, honestly, the terms essential to this proposal, commercial and non-commercial, are never defined. So how are you going to enforce this? If I'm going to keep chickens and sell the eggs to friends, does that count as commercial? Or do I have to make it bigger, or it's not clear? So that alone, I think, should make you guys maybe go over it again, or strip chart the draft in it, maybe just tighten it up. And I'm asking you to vote no, because the basics of the law, in order to implement it, has to be clear, and this is not clear.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Dave Bailey, 7223 Boulder. I'm just looking at what Anor does. I mean, we looked at what Anor does. It's a $20 permit, you have to have both adjacent property owners sign off that they accept that you're going to have chickens in your backyard. Then they have to be contained in your backyard. They can't go into the neighbor's yard and defecate. They can't go into the neighbor's yard and eat their plants. They have to be contained. But it's a $20 permit, and it just makes it to the adjacent homeowners to sign off on it that they accept that you're going to have chickens. So anyway, just don't know why it's bigger than that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Shree, I just wanted to bring the planning commission attention to a line that's on your desk. This was sent by a resident, Andrew. Mary wanted to make sure that the planning commission is aware of her concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else with public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Shree? County report?
I'm sorry, I'm under the influence of, but the report is in the packet. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer. Is it?
I think it was not. That's why I'm asking for your report. Would you like to come back to it?
Yes, please.
We'll come back to it after she has a time look at it. Township ordinance report, Mr. Westman.
Again, apparently linked in agenda, the first thing on the agenda was our annual audit. We were audited every year, the results of that audit built for state. We did not have any deficiencies, and according to Mr. Sharp, that was our human file. So we were good on that. We passed a resolution to approve the master plan for the Parks and Recreation Division. It is just a plan, we did not pass any funding to support it. But in order for them to get and seek grant money, they need to have an approved master plan. And so we approved a resolution to support that. We've been working on a social media policy for township officials, both elected and appointed, and also employees. And after several months of work, we did approve a policy for acceptable use of technology, and also a policy for public discretion personnel. And once these get published, I'm sure we will all receive an package. And if there are any criticisms, I don't think we'll be direct into the township's management, but we do have some policies that are, or very soon will be in place. We approved an electrical contract for some additional lighting as part of the parking lot contract. There was a disconnect between what we thought the contractors were bidding on and what they thought they were bidding on. Anyway, the lighting we used for the parking lot, we did have to approve two additional fixtures and a wall pack, which I did not know that did. A new post-out fixtures, split fixtures for a cost of $13,000. We approved a bid from the contractor for parking lot to apply seaweed, and it's applied in two coats, one right after the concrete initially sets, and then another coat afterwards later. That's a cost of just under $9,000. We scheduled a special board meeting, township board meeting, to talk about private credit. One of the issues we're running into is driveways that already have three houses on, there's an undeveloped, there are undeveloped parcels that would also be certain that you have to, how do we help raise votes for private credits? Anyway, we're going to be taking a look at that. That meeting is scheduled for 7:00 PM on the 29th of July. Our private inspector has not received a payment increase in the last several years, so he can do request a $2 hour payment increase from $21 an hour to $23 an hour, and we do approve that. We approved paying our annual dues to the Division of Townships Association, and we also approved some, a very small additional amount to the legal defense fund, of which we have taken the benefit of the past. But the total dues were $7,537.54. We made, because of private legions, the prior year, we had to make some appointments. Our new clerk, Tony Verlant, appointed Donna Whitman to be our deputies of that position, who will stay the same. And Treasurer John Sharp appointed Linda Sodisky to be his deputy to replace Tony Verlant, who became the clerk. So we'll get the musical chairs and office. I am pretending Mrs. Linda has agreed to be the deputy treasurer on an interim basis until John can find somebody to do it on a more permanent basis. We had a discussion on that. Our board policy requires a turn of these attending CPA meetings in order to ensure that things got done the way that they were supposed to be done. We did not make any changes to the current policy, we're going to leave it the way it is for now. We approved a request from the Dexter Historical Society to pay them $250 to have them provide public relations and record maintenance for the township. They're the ones that oversee Gordon Hall, that is the western township. We appointed Wade Representative to replace private collegiate. We appointed Donna Whitman to take that position. Wade is the western area value express, the van service that is being circulated here in the township. And finally, we approved the payment of our here-in-the-river watershed dues, and that was in the amount of $652,000 in tennis nets. That's it.
Thank you. I would just like to make one comment, particularly for the public. You mentioned the renewal of the MTA dues. That is a body that is made up of townships and throughout Michigan. It is an outstanding resource, and this body and any number of bodies can use it for both training, they back up all of our information, and they have it as a resource for additional information on any number of topics, from taxing to assessing, to things we do here in the planning commission, they have legislature updates on a regular basis for the members. And as a result of that universal dues package, it allows any of the township employees and commissioners like us, or not employees per se, to take those and learn more and stay up to date on the issues that are before us and the state. So FYI, for all of you who say, "Why would we pay these dues? What do we do with this stuff?" It's there for our use, and we do use it. Something else you might want to know along that same line with this body, every member here is required to take at least four hours of additional training a year to either MSU Extension, or the MTA, or some other approved course that allows us to stay up to date on current issues, so we don't operate totally in vacuum, although some people might think we do, but we do not. So just FYI, again, for those of you who think we don't stay up to date or do something sometime. So if anybody's running for election and get appointed or elected, you know that that might be good for you too. Anything else for John? Seeing none, Shree, do you want to, are you ready?
First of all, I'm sorry for my, before we go to the report, but it's in the board package, if you want to go back and you'll get it for details. For the most part, my, the whole month went, a big part of my month went meeting with residents regarding the private little permits, block splits, language on block splits, and a myriad of pre-op meetings with the guts of PDR Easterns, for the most part. And then I've also been working on the keeping of animals track and the accessory structures track. As I mentioned in the level, one of the meetings I had was with one of the residents who both also have the booking group, and it's one of our, I don't think he's here tonight, but he's one of our most listed residents, Pat Schloss, who got rid of the cat. And then I had another meeting with Ryan Coffey at MSU Extension, who over the device track as well. There hasn't been many comments coming in. Paul did pick up in the last few weeks, they're not being reviewed. Enforcement has been mostly closing existing regulations. We've had four complaints resolved, one follow-up inspection, and one citation issued.
Thank you. Would you please, so we have them in our printed packets, print them out, put them in our mailboxes, ready to get them ready?
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, a Shree comments? Anything? Seeing none, we will move on. Mr. Collings, CPA report?
We have not had a meeting since our last meeting here. There's a meeting coming up, it's on the 23rd of July. At that meeting, we have two hearings. One is, I believe, a conventional variance, now that it's a non-expanding and non-conforming structure. I haven't seen the paper or comment, but that's coming up on the page.
Anything for Mr. Collings, commissioners? Seeing none, PDR report, Mr. Westman.
Nothing significant due to report. We, of course, have been, you know, it's hung out even August. We have received a few new applications. We didn't have the solicitation letter earlier, and we've got some new applications, and a couple of them are pretty high quality of that. Of course, we've picked all the low-hanging proof in the township, so I was quite surprised at the quality of a couple of these applications. So we will see where that ends up. I expect to be recorded on some closings in the next month or two, and we've got four private works that total about 160 acres that will close in the next couple of months. No closing for reported time.
Nice question. Do you, does the PDR work on a fiscal year or a calendar year?
Fiscal year.
And when is the beginning and end of that?
I don't know what, March, April 1st to March 30th.
Thanks. It's one of the applications, sorry. Anything on the PDR?
I just wanted to add a little bit on the ZVA thing. The last meeting we had, we talked a little bit about an updated application that specified, specifically asked the right questions depending on the request, because our current ZVA application just focused on the dimensional areas, standards of review. But ZVA does, you know, expansion of non-conforming structures and appeals and other items that are, you know, listed in the zoning ordinance. So the application and the questionnaire are outdated, so that the applicants get to respond to that each specific standards of review. And as part of that preparation, it was pointed out to the ZVA that our current ordinance doesn't have any standards of review when ZVA is considered an appeals administrative appeal decision. The last few cases we had, we went with the standards that are standard, that are used by most communities, but that is something, housekeeping amendments sometime down the line, we see may not be the case.
Thank you.
And April 1st, March 33rd, not 30th.
Good. Kate, sorry.
We did not meet this month, so I have my own.
Well, thank you, that was for the natural features.
Yeah, the natural features, we maybe did not.
I thought you were going to show him.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought you were reminding me for the next thing. Nope, nope.
Okay, thank you. We have a public hearing tonight, so we'll move on to the whole business, the first of which is accessory structures and uses. Like keeping animals, we've been looking at this for quite a while. It's been through a number of drafts, particularly with regard to definitions. And the definition of attached and detached and reflex. So Shree has worked to redraft it from our last meeting when we agreed to make some modifications. She's also had, as far as I know, at least one or two meetings with some people who have commented about some of the things that they think can be addressed or should be addressed. One of them, at least I know, is a contractor who has worked with these things in the past. So Shree, would you please elaborate further on where we stand?
I know at the last meeting, there was a discussion about the H versus D dash, so I had an opportunity to meet with the client's consultant, one, because he's also on ZVA, and he has extensive experience, you know, the kind of previous cases that went to ZVA. And the revisions that are in the draft are in response to the meeting, the findings from that meeting. And I've had phone calls, phone calls from various residents, mostly from Baselye District, which is kind of reflective of how the comments were presented in the last plan, usually. There were some who were not opposed, and some who were furried, and some who just had questions about how the app of it would work. Then the other primary changes are just to some corrections that were discussed at the last meeting, for the table, and some classifications that are not area requirements. Everything else stayed the same, that as was discussed at the last meeting. So one of the primary reasons this was put off is, one, to get some regional classification on D dash versus A dash, and then the second one, there was this comment about patio incentives, which I said I would provide classification, which was provided in the memo. And then the third one was sleeping in accessory structures. That was something that was, that discussion was, we're looking on that discussion, so that needs to be picked up. But other than that, the doc remains the same, except those two minor changes, the questions are what needs to be discussed.
Thank you. For those of you out there in the packet, if you haven't looked at it, there is a, one section that is all of the changes that have been made and are highlighted, the other is the sequence of events since this was started last year in May. So, commissioners in our packets on page 11 of 44, which is page 1 of 7 of this, there were no changes. But you'll notice on page 12, the discussion of freeways and attached and detached is what we discussed the last time. Shree, I believe this was one of mine after the discussion with Rick.
Yes.
Particularly on attached accessories and the definition of a freeway.
Correct.
So, you said you weren't going to say anything? Please don't. I'm just, I want to.
Well, I just have a couple of questions. It says attached accessories in the definitions, and if you look at number three, if the accessory, if the attached? No, I forgot.
I have a really specific thing that I think we just missed and we took out before, and that's under the picture for attached and closed and heated. Did you take out the heated?
We did, we did.
And it's also, it's also in the little, the little explanation under the picture, it says enclosed and heated. I thought we took out heated.
We did, we did.
Right, thank you, Kate.
What's the difference between a little freeway porch, or if it's connected with a deck? You say in attached accessories, then if it's attached like deck, it's attached?
Structurally attached to the principal buildings such as decks and poches, that they are connected to the building structurally. Is that an understanding question? They're not attached by a deck or a porch, but they are, what essentially is, what I'm saying is that decks and poches are example. All stretches that are attached to the principal building.
And should be said, for example?
I mean, is it such as?
Commissioners, do you care about prosology? It's not clear to a contractor, I wonder if it's clear.
If it's such as to me, it's fine.
It's kind of consistently covered with, with the example.
The confusion comes is your cat, like a deck or porch, but how a roof breezeway is also attached to the structure, but that's a detached structure.
That's why in the dash part, we said, shares a common wall or a roof, not including a roof breezeway. And then the detached is a connected roof breezeway. Because that was the confusion in the last meeting, that if it's connected to the building, then it's covered connected. But the purpose of the breezeway is not something that can be used as a living space. Like you have a deck, you have a porch, that's kind of part of the living space. But the purpose of a breezeway is just to connect a building A to a building B. It's kind of a passage, an enhanced sidewalk. That's why it's not, breezeway by itself is not considered an accessory. It's just a connection. We use breezeway to determine whether the building B is an attached accessory or a detached accessory. That's, that's the only role the breezeway plays. If the breezeway is just right there, not connecting to anything, it's kind of like porch.
But you're saying that the accessory building that is connected by, with the deck, what's the difference?
Then the deck will not be a deck. It will be a, it's. I don't know a situation where that, I've seen that.
I, I want to get number three right now, they're all together.
But decks and poches are.
Under, under D.
Yeah. A.
On A.
Which one?
We're suggesting taking out D1A3. I, I, I.
Then where would decks and poches fall? Would they come under shares a common wall or a roof? Because not all decks would have a roof. They're just structurally attached. I. I'm a little confused, as you can see, because I think we keep coming back to this topic. And I, my response is kind of the same. The breezeway is just something that determines what standards apply to the structure. Whether can it have, if it's attached, then it can have higher height, you know, more than, up to 40 feet. If it's detached, then it's 25 feet. Whether it's attached or detached has a different implication in Baselye district because they have to, you know, separation requirements between the principal building and then the dash building. That's, that's pretty much what a breezeway does. How so? To determine what standards, dimensional standards, apply to the other building.
Are, are we hung up on porches, decks being in accessory structure?
I keep getting hung up on the breezeway.
He's hung up on the attached structure being, he's saying a porch or a deck is not an attached structure. Accessory structure.
He's saying it's a porch or a deck. If it's attached by a porch or a deck, it's considered attached.
Right.
But a breezeway is not.
That's not what it says. That's not what it says. It says if you have a deck, a deck is an accessory structure. If it's connected to the house, it's attached. If it's not connected to the house, it's detached. The deck itself, not the deck connecting a garage or other building. That's, that's what that statement means.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Administratively, can you?
Yes, I was, I, I am. But as I said, breezeway is not a structure in itself. It's just a sidewalk, a connection.
Well, to answer his question before, if the dock is attached to the house and it connects a garage, is the garage attached or detached?
Attached. Oh, if it's connected, like, at that point, I haven't seen that. Maybe that's how people, but then if the deck is structured attached and if it falls under the definition of a deck, not just, you know, a breezeway that's just used for passageway, then the garage is connected, considered a dash. It's kind of attached to an attached accessory, which is attached to the principal building.
I'm going to use an example.
But now you're in his argument.
Right.
Where he's, he was concerned about the language here, saying, why are you allowing that deck to connect a detached building, but you're not allowing a breeze, open breezeway to connect?
And maybe a deck is a living space, breezeway is a passageway. It's a, the definition of breezeway itself says it's a, it's a passage that connects to buildings. The purpose of the breezeway is so that people can get from building A to building B without getting wet or protected from the weather.
I'm going to use an example that actually occurs in real life. I can tell you later where it is.
I'm a little confused with this. I'm going to go over this and we might.
I agree with him, but their workaround was to remove one course of bricks between the structure and the patio and not attach the fence. It became detached, so it's not part of the structure. And I know where this is, it's not in this township. But I think we've got to settle on what is it even attached? Because somebody could easily play that game. You know, well, the breezeway is not attached, it doesn't have a screw in it. It's standing on four mile force, under the E, and it's a causeway or I have a porch. I didn't attach it to the house. It's standing on its own four mile force, so it's not attached either.
So there are two things that would impact that. One, there are building permit requirements that require minimum separation. And our ordinance itself requires 10 feet separation between the principal building and a detached accessory structure. And because breezeway is an exception, from a building permit perspective as well, we're losing that to say this is an actual detached. People don't need to go to county to get a permit for it. Or I'll confirm. I think.
If she can handle administratively with the definitions that are here, based on what we did at the last meeting, then we should be okay if we remove the heated as capable of that. Am I correct?
If, if that becomes an issue, we'll go to ZBA for interpretation. We don't have this connected to the structure. But now I agree, I think this cannot be put into clarify. But I will give suggestions. If you can specify a specific language, I'm happy, I will give suggestions. But this is the best I could, because again, this is not a new standard. I'm just trying to make sure we are consistent with these assumptions. Although it's going to be heated by.
Any other commissioners?
So I will agree that we chewed on this long enough. We agreed to remove the heated, and thus it helps, it helps you administratively. And I think it just needs to go forward as is. We've already removed the heated, and that if it presents a problem in the future, then we can deal with it in the future.
Well, she said that we go text them.
Exactly.
And we know what the issues at that point should be.
Exactly.
We can text them.
I mean, just to say, the definition of breezeway is a roof passage with or without walls that connects two buildings or structures. The definition itself says the only purpose of breezeway is to connect two structures. I don't have, and the definition of deck is a float structure having footings, posts, and steps typically with railing that joins or is attached to a building. So the definition's making pretty clear what a breezeway means and what a deck means. So I think from an administrative perspective, I think, I'm not, I don't think, from an administrative perspective, it's supposed to.
Okay. Let's move on to that. Page 13, there was an update under E accessory use standards prohibited uses. We had added language unless otherwise noted below 2.8. Any discussion on that change? That was agreed to at our last meeting. Seeing nothing. The next update slash change correction, whatever we had, was on page 15 of 44 or page 5 of 7. This document on utility structures, we changed yes to no under number four for generators, permanent generators. Permit required, no. Compliance with setbacks, yes. That's good.
I have one more, again, small thing that was on our list that didn't get changed. On that page, N10, it's really small. We said we capitalized the S and C, just like the other ones.
It is caps, it's a type style.
The other ones down low in 16 and 17 are capitalized.
That happens to, that is the type style.
It's, it's not.
She's, she's talking about S and the word C, not.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, it's not capitalized.
Okay. Can we go on and hand down the page then? So are we okay with number four?
Yes.
Yes.
Katie had an update to number 10 on capitalization. Are we good on that?
Yes.
Yes.
The next change I note is number 14 under other for patios. Change of descriptor. Commissioners? Seeing no comments.
I would like to go back to 900 utility structures, barrier free ramps.
Yes.
I would like to suggest to change compliance with setbacks to the same as we did with. Barrier free ramps.
Oh, right. She said yes, C H.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
So I don't know what people think about that, but I do.
No, I think all we need to say C H.
Yes, okay, that's what I'm alluding to, I guess.
Yes.
Under the compliance with setbacks?
Because we didn't say the name porch, and we gave them much.
Oh, you're correct. All right. Okay, with that then, the addition of yes, top of C, capital H, under number nine for various ramps. Okay, anything else, Tom? Are we good? Mr. Westman?
Yes.
Anything else, or are you okay to go to 14 on patios?
No.
Thank you. Are you okay with 14, changing the order to patios? Seeing no comments or hand raised, we'll move to page 16 of 44, which is 6 of 7 of this document. We had the word shall submit the permit for exemption, for verification. And written verification by the zoning administrator under O. Any changes or corrections, additional corrections we need to make to that?
That page or section?
Section O.
Section O.
Page 16 and 44, or page 6 and 7 of this document. No other comments on that one? Then section 13.80, lot area requirements, did change number two?
In that one, again, there's a small thing. Right at the end of the sentence before complete, there's like a half quote.
Oh, that was supposed to be removed last.
So it was on our list and then it's, because it's sort of weird that it's just hanging. So there needs to be another one after facilities, completely used facilities, I think. Thank you.
See what it is? Commissioners, any comments, suggestions on that change of word? Seeing none except for the apostrophe at the end of complete living facilities. Number, number 14, we had a correction for section 13.15. Nothing else in addition to that? Seeing none, we'll move on to definitions on page 17 of 44, or packet or 7 of 7 of this document. There were two, three things. Under volume, describing full bathroom facilities as opposed to just bathroom facilities under buildings. Any updates, changes there? We also changed the definition descriptor to full bathroom and kitchen as opposed to just bathroom and kitchen. Any comments or changes there? Has been asked that we go back and look at section 2.10 under definitions of breezeways. What we have is a roof passage with or without walls that connects two buildings or structures. The suggestion that was handed to me says, should say that sugar should not have walls. Is that what I'm reading correctly? If it has walls, is it a breezeway? If it doesn't have walls?
It can if it has walls, it's an enclosed breezeway. If it doesn't have walls, it's a roof breach, I think. It doesn't say that.
It doesn't say that.
That's, that's what it meant, that's how people, the standards are.
I know that, but should, should we change, add the word enclosed? You say? I'm just saying.
I mean, sure, I mean, if you wanted to add words, then we can say enclosed with walls or with all the walls.
Do we need to do that, Commissioners? Or is it okay as is? Anybody else's comments?
I mean, it's just one word. I, I really, that's not something I would.
Julie?
I don't think it hurts, because it's separate on page two that if we give it a little more separation, it kind of matches the enclosed and the rest.
That's fine.
So the word we want to add on breezeway of 17 or 14 is a roof passage with or without.
Enclosed with or without walls?
Enclosed with walls, all the walls.
Enclosed with or without walls. Correct?
No.
No.
That's what we're going to do.
I think it's.
I think we're adding complexity.
I mean, I, I think it's simple. I mean, when people look at enclosed in the accessory structures, I mean, you have definition and definition, enclosed with, enclosed with walls.
Well, the problem with this is, it says it's connected to structures. And then detached, I mean, attached accessory, it says excluding a roof. And then D dash, I mean, D dash accessory, it says excluding a roofed breezeway. And the definition says it's connected to your structures.
I'm...
The other thing I'm trying to do is, you know, try and eliminate some of the confusion when it gets to the ZVA. Because you can't, at the ZVA level, you can't say what you intended it to say, you, you have to go by what it does say.
So you're concerned that as it's described on page two of seven under two, it's somewhat complex with the definition we have here of breezeway?
Uh, probably before you are joining, I'd like to feedback to, uh, just make sure that if, uh, it's just for that one bar.
Right, is that okay with you?
Because if he, if our place says that can be, you know, justified then. If someone's...
Sorry, I'm making notes myself, just to...
Before we move on, I'd like to take a look at dwelling. I don't think it says, what would mean it does that? Second, or it says motorhome automobile tender other portable building not defined as a recreation vehicle. Be considered a dwelling, but doesn't a recreational vehicle sometimes come as a travel trailer or motorhome?
I would have to look at the definition for recreation vehicle. Uh, that, I believe that includes those things.
That's the way this reads. To me, they still imply as a recreational vehicle could potentially be considered a dwelling.
Thank you. No, I think it says in no case that can be considered a dwelling.
I do read.
I, I read it, but she wrote it.
Okay.
I could be wrong. Team, anybody else? My read was recreational vehicle was a, a, a collect, a collection and these were examples of what a recreational vehicle could be. Under no case would a recreational vehicle be considered dwelling.
Not defined as a recreational vehicle, so that means a recreational vehicle has some different status from the ones that are not defined.
Hmm, okay.
And I think they're all, all the same status, and they should just, should say motorhome recreational vehicle.
Right.
Yeah, that's correct, that's fair enough. I, I think I, I see the intent I get, but John's point, you know, just add recreational vehicle.
That makes it clear.
It, it just makes it clear.
Yes, because then recreational vehicle, the definition talks about travel trailers, travel, amber pickup truck. So it already covers all the options, so.
So we could say in no case can a recreational vehicle and or portable building as a dwelling.
The, I think I'm hearing we add the words recreational vehicle, shall the recreational vehicle from travel trailer, motorhome, automobile tent, or other portable building be considered as a dwelling?
We can remove the caboodle or pickup home because it pulls out, and it pulls out the car body with the definitions, but what?
Yeah.
Julie's saying, so...
That's the same with them.
Well, it's always recreational. So in no case shall a recreational vehicle or other portable building be considered a dwelling?
Yes.
That's perfect.
Got it, everybody?
Yes.
Got it? A recreational vehicle or other portable building be considered a dwelling. It's portable building.
Okay. And where does that go?
Pardon me?
Where does that statement go, for dwelling?
It, it, it replaces the second sentence of dwelling, the definition of dwelling. Thanks, John, that's good. Anything else? Might we have a motion? No, no question. So we go to the affidavit, we're at page twenty-three.
It's, I think that was the lead in this place, page after.
It belongs to the section, yeah. So Shree, as I read this, number three talks about detached accessory structure. Number five talks about attached accessory structure that I intend to build. If I'm signing this affidavit, this is an either or, right? Because I'm, I'm not gonna, number three talks about the constructing a detached structure. Number five says I'm just...
Or it's either or.
So could you maybe have a three A and three B? And it's, it's either one or the other that you're signing this affidavit for, not both?
Right. Oh, actually, thank you for bringing that up, because that was the third question that the planning commission, you know, discussed or discussed more at the last meeting, based on the comments you received from the baselite district, whether to allow sleeping in accessory structures in baselite. It's the third iPhone drill memo. I just want to make sure that you're all agree with me before you make a motion, because the draft, if forwarded to the board, will allow sleeping in accessory structures.
Does the, is the affidavit in our purview?
Uh, it's, it's an administrative thing, but it is, oh, I mean, I'm...
Well, I don't know that it'd be part of the motion to us to accept.
No, you don't have to accept the affidavit as part of the motion.
Correct.
That's, uh, you know, for your input and general comments, but if you are, if you forward the draft as is, then the draft is permitting sleeping in accessory structures in all districts in this country. So if you want page eight...
No, it's, it's page twenty-three.
Right, I was just trying to put it in my memo.
Oh, she's been needing progress for the minutes. It's misplaced, yeah, it's supposed to be, it's not supposed to be, it's supposed to be what we're talking about. So Paul, would you please reiterate what you're saying, number three?
Okay, on, on page twenty-three, item number three, the person signing this affidavit intends to construct a detached accessory structure. And five, that same person agrees to construct an accessory, attached accessory structure. So what I'm saying is, when you sign this affidavit, you're doing one or the other, not both.
I could just remove all references to that for detached with this thing, this...
If that's what you want to do, I could just say make it three A or three B, and I have to check one.
I would definitely run this by our attorney before we make it an official document, just to know, but yes. And then, Mark, you don't need to get the, this page in the minutes. I think Tom's just sort of saying that we got to look at affidavit, which is on page nine, please.
And that's part of our, we're going to scroll. If you have to wait for the attorney, you can't make a motion to move it forward.
No.
Go ahead.
I have a question, so, um, what happens to this affidavit if it's...
So the intent, okay, I'll just take a step back and clarify why I included the affidavit. Because at the last meeting, when the residents came to express their concerns or their support for this change, their major concern was that, you know, can they, would this turn into an Airbnb, or will this be something we can control? How would you enforce it? And the reason why I included the affidavit is to provide you with some sense of clarity as how it could be enforced before you make your motion on the draft. So that's just provided to give you some background.
Is FYI more than national, or...
That one, yes. That one, yes, it's, it's an FYI, because if you feel like the standards in there are, you know, if you lack comfort that, you know, if the affidavit is recorded, that maybe then allows sleeping in accessory structures. Uh, coming back to your question, the affidavit is required to be motorized and recorded with the county register deeds, so that it will be, uh, it will show up in any property search if the, if the, you know, property ever transfers different orders.
Thank you.
I also have one other comment about short-term rentals. So in height, in twenty twenty-one, we added short-term rentals, or the definition of motel. And motels, which includes short-term rentals, are only allowed in the commercial district, no other districts. And if you didn't know that that was there, you would have a hell of a time finding that. So I'm wondering, since the concern with short-term rentals, rentals, I know we don't want to repeat things, but, um, is there, would it be beneficial to be more direct and say something about no short-term rentals, or refer to this section or something? Because no one is ever going to find that otherwise, that there's no short-term rentals allowed.
No, that's a good point. Uh, the only thing I just want to point out is that the short-term, we don't have a definition of short-term rentals, but the motel definition hints, you know, hints that anything less than thirty days is considered short-term.
Yeah, so we do use the word short-term rental in the definition with motel. But if I'm looking in the ordinance for short-term rentals, why would I look under motel? And so I, I think it's hard to find. So is there a way to make it more obvious that that's not allowed? Because that's what we... I don't know, somewhere, somehow. Because that's what they were worried about, if you just say sleeping, what's the difference between sleeping and a short-term rental? If they only sleeping, I don't, I don't know.
What's the, uh...
I think that, at this point, we're far enough along that we're looking at accessory structures, not rentals.
I was addressing the concern of the residents, so just raising a question.
Do you, do we have a definition for lodging? Sorry, my future is off, and...
No. No lodging definition.
So that is something we could consider, because this one says not dwelling, lodging, or sleeping, but this is, we could define lodging.
Would that help address the concern?
Yes.
Of the residents that must somehow find any sort of...
Right, so the definition of lodging, we can refer to short-term rentals, you know, daily rentals, because what if they are rented in a space for thirty-one days?
So should us, again, have our definitions here?
Yeah. It doesn't wire the postponement, this is just a definition, you could say that the board can review the definition if you're good with the rest of the draft.
Commissioners, you okay with that, inserting it here and sending it to the board with that definition added?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I've got just concerns with the concept, and I've expressed them before. How do we ensure that this sleeping space, uh, meets, uh, the building codes? Because there are, there are standards for bedrooms, niggasides, and egress, and egress, and, uh, most garages would not make, make those standards. I can see if we were approving a permit for a new structure, if, uh, because it says that it'd be built to a certain standard, if it would be used for sleeping quarters, but if you have an existing garage, a lot of those have no, then, but, so you're, you're on the second floor of that garage, and there's a fire catches fire underneath you, uh, you're done?
Um, so a couple of things. The ordinance states that you cannot change the use without a zoning compliance permit. So if they are converting a garage space or any space in accessory structure, they would have to come to me for a permit, which is when I would require the affidavit, I would live the plan, and then I would say, I would direct them to the Washington County Building Department to get their building permit.
Yeah, well, if they don't change the space...
Then they are in violation of the ordinance, which is...
Not our ordinance. If we say that you can sleep in a detached structure, but that you don't have conditions, if we don't say that it's just new, uh, the county, the building code, I, I just have concerns about that, in terms...
No, I, I think that's a good point, we could put something in there that's saying, uh, very, very tall, tall.
I just about guarantee you that, right now, what's happening somewhere in the nine fifty, somebody, somebody sleeping underground and wouldn't be able to get out if there was a fire.
Um, where it talks about... Under prohibited uses, page thirteen of forty-four. Uh, we look at E two B, where it says the zoning administrator may go and use a part of detached accessory structures, and then it say, uh, Washington, the change of space should come, should comply with Washington County Building Department, so if you have to apply to...
So what words are we adding there? You want to make sure it's clear in minutes? You're, you're adding, you're adding to the end of B, correct?
Right, end of E two B.
Correct.
I would say such space should comply with Washington County Building public requirements. Building standards.
Shall or will?
Shall.
Code or requirements?
I would say Washington County public requirements would be called a medical requirement.
So they're going to have to get a permit before the county building permit, before they can sleep in the...
They can, they can, before, prior to the start of the use, I would probably say. Prior to the start of the use, the applicant shall, uh, shall apply for applicable permits with the Washington County. Let me put that together so that I can repeat it for Mark then.
Well, that's, that is the issue, that is the issue.
I have a suggestion for Shree. Uh, for your wording, why don't you just get with Washington County to have them help you with the wording? And the, and the reason for this is, is because in a basement, if you have a bedroom in a basement, and the definition of that is a closet, you gotta have the egress window and all of this stuff for them to call it a basement. But you're not, you can sleep in a basement, even if you don't have an egress window, you just cannot call it a, a bedroom in the basement.
Not a living space.
Okay, it's not a living space, but you can sleep down there, right? You can have a slumber party in the basement. So I would suggest just getting with the county to have them help you with the wording of that, because I'm, I don't know, but I'm thinking that what you're looking at would be similar to a basement, but it's above.
I, I was gonna say...
Oh, regardless where it is, George, whether it's on top or down in the basement, they're still gonna have to have the permit for sleeping.
That's correct, I, I agree, I'm just saying...
Yeah, for our purposes, we just have to refer, but we don't have to have them.
Specify what they want, you know?
Yeah, that, that's fine, I'm...
But, but let me do this. Prior to the start of such use, the applicant shall acquire all applicable permit, permits from Washington County Building Department. Or we could be all...
Yeah, that's, that's broad base.
Yeah.
That's good.
Sure.
Prior to the start of such use, I don't think this is working, I don't know why it keeps... It's working.
Is it on? Batteries go down. I'll speak up, will you? We'll get you. I know we have one.
Oh, there it is. Okay, so prior to the start of such use, the owner shall acquire all applicable permits from Wasna County Building Department.
So before you said applicant.
Owner, owner, owner. All applicable permits from Wasna County Building Department.
Good luck, Commissioners.
Yeah.
That's the case where it's the end of this argument. Is anybody willing to make a motion?
I have a motion. In, it's on page nine. In the matter of next amendment twenty-three ZTA zero-one, a motion to recommend to the township for adoption of the proposed amendment to sections two-ten, thirteen fifteen and thirteen KB of the Webster Township zoning ordinance. The motion is based on the draft as presented with the changes discussed.
At the meeting.
Oh, with, as presented at the public hearing last week? No, as presented at the meeting with the changes discussed.
Sorry, that was the last one.
So as presented at the meeting with the changes discussed.
Yes.
Hang a second. Julie, second. Roll call. Julie.
Ryan.
Aye.
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 Aye. Discussion. Motion carried. In the matter of accessory structure and use draft, it has been passed. Thank you Commissioners. Thank you for the public for your intuition and thoughts. Moving on. Section thirteen point two-five, keeping of animals. Several pages twenty-three.
Hi.
It's the affidavit.
I think the memo is on page nineteen.
Yeah. There has been a lot of effort on this. I mentioned it in the last meeting and Shree summarized a little bit earlier. In addition to a lot of public input, we now have some board input. Shree has done some, uh, review of, of land use and first population. We've also engaged, what I consider, people who are a little more expert than most in the MSU extension, who guides and writes and ministers the same kind of ordinance for other townships and cities throughout the state. Ryan has looked at a number of drafts from a number of parties who have submitted work to us on behalf of various constituents. And so that has been summarized and incorporated into the draft that has been brought us tonight. And that being said, Shree, if you'd like to summarize in a little more detail, or any other things that I did not touch on.
I think I'll probably, uh, the board's input, uh, the board also had discussion at their last meeting where they discussed the survey in a little bit more detail. And the discussion didn't yield any input that is different from what's included in the survey. I explained to the board why each question was asked and what was the takeaway from the responses for me and how I incorporated those changes into the draft. Because for me, the most telling or guiding factors are their comments more than these, you know, the quantitative yes or no's. But the comments that followed them were giving me a sense of where they are. There are some questions where they are not sure. There are some questions where they are, they needed more guidance. And at some places where they are very sure what should be and what shouldn't be. Before we go into the other part, I wanted to check with the PC if we go to page thirty-five, if there are any specific questions you want me to expand on or provide a little bit more information.
You mean this page?
Twenty-five.
Oh, thirty-five, sorry.
Which is already on the circuit. Right. So the first one was, you know, the ordinance, the pre-ordinance requires five acres net for equal form animals. And whether, you know, township should consider permitting animals on smaller lots. And my takeaway was that they were, you know, generally towards maybe, but subject to additional standards, such as setbacks, and then maybe allowing just smaller form animals, not all animals. So that was reflected in the draft, uh, where the draft kind of categorizes into three categories. You know, less than two requires a conditional land use. Two to five requires a conditional land use. Five net stays as exactly the same. I'll expand on that when we get to the draft a little bit. Uh, then, then the next question was, you know, do you think the gross, gross area to determine whether a lot is eligible for keeping animals is acceptable? That is one of the comments I've received and I've heard from the residents that, you know, gross, gross, gross versus net. Gross area is something that's regularly available, for instance, when they buy a property or they look at county website. And then they created something they would have to calculate by taking the right away away. The board were like, you know, they wanted to keep it, that there was like a half and half kind of thing where they were not sure. They were like, yes, provided densities are based on usable area or no, it should, oh, it's, it's kind of all over the place. So I think they probably are not quite sure and they're trying to looking for more information whether what is more acceptable. But in, in general, they are leaning towards the usable area for calculating densities, at least. Question four, where they said what area should be excluded from the area calculation for animal densities? Uh, I know that thing got cut off. The first one is right away or access statements. Michigan evil, redlands, surface waters, principal structures, minor accessory structures and large accessory structures. And they were in favor for the majority to exclude all of those when we determine animal densities. But the current draft does not exclude large accessories, but that's where the board works. Question five, what should be the minimum net acreage required for keeping poultry? I know chickens is a big, uh, topic and in demand. Most residents want to have more chickens, so the board said two acres, one acre. They're all over the place on that. I think what my takeaway from that is that they're trying to look at additional standards so that they can feel more comfortable with the acreage, but they're kind of a little bit all over the board on that. Nobody said it. Uh, question six, what should be the minimum net acreage required for keeping livestock? There was also discussion where we said, you know, do you think we should have smaller acreage? They said, yes, maybe smaller animals. So the question six refers to if you are going less than five, maybe limiting certain animals, depending on, you know, potential nuisance or, uh, risk constraining or care, more than anything, care of animals. Question seven, what do you easily understand for regulating animal densities? We have animal units, which, um, we have in the draft and then we have animal unit, uh, sorry, animal units, which is in the M-DAR GAMS for larger scale animal operations. Animal unit equivalence, which is kind of a balance between number of animals per acre and animal unit. The animal unit didn't gather much love from the board. It was between number of animals per acre and animal unit equivalence. And after talking with Ryan at coffee, he suggested we looked at, we looked together at multiple different ordinances and then we kind of came to a conclusion that eight to eight, the animal unit equivalence makes more sense when you have multiple categories in acreage, when you have like zero point five to one, one to two, two to three. Then those make more sense, but the way the draft is drafted to keep it simple, uh, number of animals per acre makes more sense. In your opinion, surrounding land uses or what surrounding land uses are less likely to be impacted by nuisances related to keeping of animals? We were just trying to figure out, you know, would you, if a property is surrounded by a PDR or a preservation land as opposed to a site condominium, you know, there is a difference in what kind of impacts the keeping of animals will have on the surrounding properties. And we were trying to see what they think will have more impact. And single-family residential and planned neighborhoods are the ones they want to protect from any potential issues with keeping of animals. What do you think of the requirement to get neighbors buy-in when having larger form animals? I know one of the residents spoke about Ann Arbor trying to get letters from neighbors. That is also one of the items Ryan suggested. However, a couple of challenges with that that we need to keep in mind is what happens when the neighbor, when there's a sale happens and the new owner next door neighbor doesn't want you to keep animals? Um, so we could do something like an affidavit, like we did with, we proposed with the accessory structure where they would sign an affidavit, you know, attaching it to the lot deed restriction so that when the when there's a sale of property happens and the new owner is aware that, you know, this is what has been agreed on and he has to honor it. So there are certain legal challenges with that. It makes more sense for smaller communities where they are, they apply that more often. I'm gonna share a map in just a bit, but for Webster Township, it doesn't make much sense. But that is an option that can be considered if you feel it's right, if it's. What type of permit is required for keeping of animals? They all agree, none as existing. We don't need to require any permits. For keeping of animals, or left question seven, for keeping of animals on sites smaller than it will require, what do you think is an appropriate procedural requirement? This was raised by the residents that, you know, when you go to ZDA, they go with hardship-related issues and how do you justify hardship for a use such as keeping of animals? So it just makes, it's a futile process to go to ZDA for uses like this. After talking with Ryan, there are a couple of options if we want to proceed with caution. There is a thing conditional use permits, and then we have special land use permit, and then we have PC approval, which is not a special land use, but at least it's up to discretion of, uh, you know, board members rather than discretion of one person. So we, I included the conditional land use option in the draft so that the PC can determine whether if that makes sense or if they want to do use any of the other two options. The board wasn't quite sure. They're, I think they're, they're looking for your recommendation on that aspect. Also included in the memo is a chart that talks about, you know, how we can determine whether a certain owner has to comply with township ordinances or if they're protected by a right to farm act. So the, the, the one repeated advice given by Ryan when we were talking about all these ordinances is that, you know, you, every community has to draft an ordinance assuming everything is non-commercial. Because everybody has to comply with these standards. But if somebody is not able to comply with standards or if they want, you know, if they feel like that doesn't, they're protected by right to farm act because they fall under the farm operation definition and, you know, other, as, you know, they're complying with GAMS and other aspects of such, then MSU extension has been helping communities to determine, you know, whether if that's something that should be taken into step, which way to go at that point. Also included in the packet, I would take, get your attention to page twenty-five. I included a little image that indicates, you know, that our ordinance is not stricter. It actually allows, uh, more people to have animals, subject to the standards. Like, for example, if you look at, if you are referring to GAMS site selection criteria, it says that you cannot have a livestock facility or, you know, livestock includes poultry, you know, if you have a non-farm residence within two hundred and fifty feet. Uh, but what our ordinance allows is you can have, you know, chickens or certain animals, even if you have a non-farm residence within two hundred and fifty feet. And you are, you are permitted to have some roadside, you know, a roadside stand and have some sales. Uh, without having to worry about, oh, if I want to have chickens and want to sell some eggs, do I have to prove that, you know, unprotected by right to farm act? So they, they are, this ordinance provides that opportunity. Because if the same resident went to, say, is unprotected by right to farm and he's within two hundred and fifty feet buffer and he goes to get his compliance from GAMS, they would, they wouldn't be, they would be non-con, non-conform, non-conforming with the GAMS standard. Because you have a non-farm residence within two hundred and fifty feet. So I just wanted to point it out that our, one, like Ryan said, ordinance should be drafted assuming everything is non-commercial and you deal with any questions or protection cases case by case basis. Okay, with that, I wanted to show you a little map I put together and then a collected graph because of the one that was provided at the board. There were some good questions raised by planning commission members and I think that prompted me to think a little bit more into this. You can shut the window. I will flip it out to the residents later. This map was prepared by Wasna County GIS department. She helped me put this together. What it does was, uh, page, I know it's hard to see because it's too far, but I wanted to focus on some colors over here. Uh, what it does is it identifies parcels, uh, based on sizes. So we have parcels that are up to one acre, one to two acre, two to five, five to ten, ten to twenty, twenty acres. As you can see, and then I also manually identified all the parcels that are in PDR regions that are green highlights, I can see the part. I'll turn it around to the residents. And then we also identify all the blue parcels which are public lands, you know, owned by MSU or public partners. And then everything that has no color is all properties which are more than twenty acres. And then everything in red is more, you know, more than five, ten. And orange are the ones which are five acres, five to ten. It doesn't account for those few parcels which are around the border of five acres that are adorning the right way. Because it may show as orange here, but when you careful with the net, they may be less than five, but they're only a couple. The current ordinance, except for the green parcels outlined by the black and then the. The current ordinance, except for the green parcels outlined by the black and then the ones that are filled with black, except for those which you can see are in blue batches, it allows keeping of animals for the rest of the township. The other thing I wanted to point out is in the map also there are site condominiums which are, as the red outline. If they have any master deed restrictions that you cannot keep, you know, you cannot keep animals, then they are not allowed to keep animals and they have to deal with right to farm in that case. So the current draft you guys are working on and we've been working on will allow keeping of animals in all the green areas with black and then the black ones, which are not, so I just wanted to give you a snapshot. Don't, it's not a recommendation or anything, but I want you to understand that the current ordinance doesn't, it allows keeping of animals in the majority of the township. And what you have. The graph gives, the panel that is provided to you is, provides a table that is listed by percent of lots, acreage, and then it kind of includes, you know, PDR, public lands, five plus one acres. I, I hope, I mean, it helped me immensely going through the process. It could help you or confuse you. I apologize if it confuses you, but I'm happy to.
You can farm on PDR lands, right?
You can farm on, yes, you can farm on PDR lands, but those are over five acres.
Right. So I'm just looking at, so if we look at what percentage of the land, of the landowners, and we leave out the public lands, it's like seventy, seventy percent or seventy-nine?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine percent of the township.
Right.
Has more than five acres, which would be covered by our current ordinance, which says have animals. Our current ordinance is very flexible and not restrictive at all for lots above five acres, right?
Right. I would probably take a margin of error just because, you know, I didn't have the ability to exclude those parcels which are right at the five acre border and abutting the right of way where the net and the gross comes.
It's a, it's a, it's a majority of acreage in the township.
Right.
Is covered by our current ordinance, not the new, and the new draft.
Right.
And that part is very flexible and not restrictive at all.
Yes.
It just says have animals, you know, five acres.
Right. So I'll turn this over to the PC while you're doing it.
At the same time that you have all acres, that represents twenty-nine percent of the population.
I understand that.
Okay.
So actually, the connection I wanted to make is with the master plan goals. So I gave you all, this is from the master plan, I gave you this page where we are a community, every five years we do get input and we say what our community goals are. And this first paragraph and the first two are supported by having an unrestricted and flexible keeping of animal ordinance for the majority of the land in the township. So it says, Webster Township recognizes the importance of private property rights. It also recognizes that community is a special place, highly valued. Therefore, our land policies, use policies and regulations, we strive to strike the proper balance to provide appropriate protection for the community from the adverse impacts of development. One of the first characteristics that we all value is the rural character of the township should be preserved. Another is large areas of active agriculture land should be maintained as a viable long-term land use within the township. So I think our current ordinance and that part for large pieces are supported by this book of current ordinance and this draft. And I really like the way this draft is organized because we come to three point oh four. It says, in areas where residential is the appropriate long-term use, the transition from a predominantly agricultural landsley to a primarily residential one should be carefully managed to minimize loss of open, undivided land and natural features. And then the very last one on this page, so these, one of these goals that I mentioned, they have been in our master plan for many cycles every five years. The newer, newish one is three point one-two, the sustainability of our community, particularly with respect to environmental sustainability, local food production and energy independence should be encouraged and supported within the township. And that has been the focus ever since the beginning of this, for landowners with less and by acres to increase their opportunities to have animals. And I really like the way this is organized because it takes each group that says, well, if you have acres or if you want to do a project or if you, you don't fit many of these categories. So I think it really allows us to look at the bigger context of our community goals with this. And so I really like the way this draft is organized. I think it supports our community goals.
With all that abundant context, we can move on to the draft, page twenty-seven. So on page twenty-seven, A through E, the only thing that's added than, you know, the previous draft is the education and training. I know one of the concern is that, you know, everybody wants to keep poultry and animals, but is everybody trained or aware or educated about how to keep them, you know, healthy, safe and healthy because animal care is a big, one of the big goals, intent. Because the intent says, say, yeah, education and training. Property owners who plan to keep or raise animals are encouraged to contact the Michigan Department Right to Farm Program for advice on manure management and animal care. And then the other section is the language the planning commission went over that was forwarded to the board, but it does exclude certain things Ryan Coffee suggested to take away.
So in his email to you, he talked about conformance versus conform, have those changes been made yet?
Um, that one, he was referring to that flow chart.
Oh, thank you.
Are you wanting this off for later or is that?
Oh, that was just provided for, it's not part of the amendment. That was just, I was trying to impart everything I learned from you guys over many, many meetings.
Okay. This is a very good chart.
Thank you. Yeah, both Ryan and Mike looked at it, preferred shares of yours. Okay. So I guess for A through D, any comments, questions, revisions?
B, did you say?
A through D.
Oh, sorry.
But my, what kind of D would be, I mean, Michigan State University Extension is created source for educational purposes, so I'll have that in there for your source.
She knows this.
As, as Michigan State University Extension to Section D. She's been in four H for a long time, she knows this.
So put it after.
After.
Right to farm program.
And Michigan State University Extension.
Any other questions, have any comments on A through D?
So I, I have a question for, going back to M-DAR. So Michigan, for B, on B, Michigan Department of Agriculture's Right to Farm Program, aren't we suggesting that you contact the agency? So you're suggesting that it's Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development?
Right, M-DAR.
Right? You, you contact M-DAR.
Right to farm program.
Well, you just contact M-DAR and you're telling them what your, your need is, right? Just like you can contact the MSU Extension for what you're looking for. So you have, you're providing two sources to contact and this is why I'm contacting you. I would remove manure management and animal care because there's a lot more to do with animals than that. That is implying that, that I would just remove that. You're reaching, you're, you're giving a, you're reaching out to M-DAR and MSU Extension for assistance with.
Education.
Education on, on animals and they, they will direct you from there.
I don't disagree with you, but in our last meeting, the subject came up of manure management. And so I don't think it's imperative to include some reference to that because it was Paul's points. So maybe we add some words, advice on animal care.
For advice on manure management, animal care and other best practices.
Come on, I'm just making a point.
Because with that, we are emphasizing on these two things, but we're also acknowledging the other.
Right. Okay. I'm good with that. Are you guys? That handles his issue, handles Paul's concern for last meeting.
Can we repeat the edition?
Sure. Property owners who plan to keep or raise animals are encouraged to contact the M-DAR Right to Farm Program.
Should we put that in parentheses?
I mean, I'm assuming that after I put it out.
Okay.
Yes. Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, parentheses, M-DAR Right to Farm Program and Michigan State University Extension for advice on manure management, animal care and other best practices for keeping of animals.
I think that works. I think it works. Thank you. Anything else on A through D? On the E, there was an added section?
I think the only reason why I put it there as a suggestion is because, you know, residents are like, okay, we can figure out what gross is, how do we figure out what net is, how do we figure out what's the usable area is. So I'm providing them an option to contact me so that I can help them with that calculation. They don't need to apply for a permit. But if they wanted to apply for one, just so if any questions are raised, they can tell their neighbors, hey, I've looked into it, these are my, this is what is permitted and I'm staying within what's permitted, that I could provide one at their discretion. It's not required if they want.
U-A-E, you've got a type of where permitted, should it say where permitted?
Well, I can never mind. Oh, yes.
And the second issue on the next page, one A, it's not the grass area, it's the gross area.
We're, we're, we're on the first one.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I get it.
Can we still talk about this permit thing?
Wait, hold on, hold on. Where, where were your two corrections? Where, where were your two corrections?
There weren't questions, there were titles.
I know, where are they?
In, I think it's twenty-seven or forty-four, under E permit, in E one, in the second sentence, it says residential district where permitted and it.
Gotcha.
Should say where permitted.
And the second one you noted?
And the second one was on the next page, twenty-eight, under that, matching all of the definitions.
Okay.
Lot area terminology, gross lot area.
Got it. Okay, okay, back to yous.
I have a lot of concerns about this P three edition because it sounds incredibly complicated. It sounds like you can get zoning approval.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, or a permit. And I think in general, for general guidance, the board and I agree, are, we don't, we don't need permits. We want people to follow the ordinance and they can get your help, but we don't want to create a new layer of sort of bureaucratic permits. So I'm very concerned about that.
I think even if you remove it, it goes without saying that they can always reach out to me. You don't have to put it in the ordinance, it kind of goes without saying.
I don't think it makes sense to put it in the order too.
Maybe that's why the sentence feels half-baked because I wasn't for sure.
We're correcting them.
E three?
Yeah. So on to F, our grass areas.
Where do we find that?
I have a comment about that section. In the, in the board feedback, you listed surface water.
Right.
As something that would not be, that would be excluded. And that's not here in one C.
Yes, yes.
Everything else that had a high level was included, but isn't that?
No, that was unintentional.
Yeah, okay. So surface water needs to be added.
Could you read the sentence, please, with your addition?
Yeah. So, well, the total gross lot area is moving right of way, private road access, he's been some principal buildings, surface water, is it area or surface water?
Surface water.
Surface water and empty easel regulated wetlands.
Okay. So we're just adding the words surface water after principal buildings comes surface water and people, right?
Yes, because if it was in the survey.
That's correct.
Then it just got.
So that was not intentional, but I did not include the accessory structures. I wanted to leave it for your discussion, but, because the last draft we looked at, we had that whole diagram that indicates, you know, if the structure is used for animal shelter, you include it, if it's not, then you exclude it. So I was just trying to minimize.
You're just worried about surface water.
Because she's explaining why she didn't add something else to here.
Oh, oh, okay.
So she's adding to this point.
That, that's the reason why it's not there because I was trying to exclude one level of inclusion. But however, it is, like I said, the text in red is kind of a medium between two extremes of standards, so.
Based on what you showed us in the board in the, yeah, I think.
We should add the large accessory structures anyway, and maybe not the minor ones, is that word? I don't know.
Well, that's what the board was sort of split on. That's, that's not a concern, but the, the board was split almost equally on any number of issues.
On the minor one, but on the large, the large had the same, four out of five, same as principal structure, surface water and the eagle.
Right. So the way we've been referring to minor and large is anything over two hundred and fifty square feet is considered large?
That's not big. Never mind.
That, that's why I was, yeah, if you wanted to, if you wanted to have it. Then, you know, it just opens up all these questions about, okay, how large, what if we have shelters, what if we don't have shelters? I mean, we do have the maximum lot coverage that limits, you know, amount of space that is dedicated to the things.
I'm okay with that. Sounds just way too complicated and they're not that.
Yeah. I think it's up to interpretation, that's why she, and so that even goes to ZDA, it's like these guys are gonna be, you know, fifty-two curvy about it. Anyone else?
Yeah. I'd like to have a discussion on a lot of that's these, not by usable area, but by net area. You're putting a lot on burden on the homeowner and on her to go out there and measure buildings, look for wetland, look for unusable areas, keep it simple, keep it in net area, and do it that way. That's, that's how this five acres is calculated, by net area. You've got five acres, subtract right of way and you get that, that's how that's been done. Now we're going, and I know what they, I know what GAMS do, that's for big properties. And you're, you're creating a lot of work. I have people measure their principal building and they come up with a number. That's, I'm for something different than usable area.
So I, I'm sort of. So I, I'm sort of intrigued by that idea. And what I'm really concerned about is, so we have these overlays and, and in Article sixteen, and the overlays protect groundwater and surface water and these other things. And if we actually use those, then, because if you're looking at something, you'll know they're there and in those overlays, for example, it, it prohibits in the groundwater confined animal feeding operations. Or for the surface water, it has a setback of two hundred and fifty feet. So if we're actually using somehow, if someone makes a plan to build a building or have animals, if we're using Article sixteen, then I don't have any problem with using that area.
But are, again, are we, is it gonna get in the way of what's trying to be accomplished by the propensity of the places that are gonna be discussed are under five acres? Okay, I mean, I get where you're going and I don't disagree. But if the preponderance of what people are looking at are smaller, smaller parcels, then.
The overlay still apply?
Yeah, I know that, but.
So if we're applying the overlays and the setbacks on the river, then I'm okay? We don't need to include it in the calculation?
So just eliminate C?
That's what I'm saying, I agree with Paul that if we're following Article sixteen, we don't need all those things in C.
Sure, can you, can you handle that if I'm looking at those overlays?
Um, yes, uh, but I can just keep as a reminder, I would probably, somewhere in the ordinance, I'll find the right place.